Good evening. This is February 28th. I'm even Wimfimer for Select Woman and I'm joined by Steve Hall, Selectman, and Amanda Thompson, Selectperson. This is our Board of Selectmen Hybrid Meeting. First on the, next on the agenda, other than calling to order, is public comment. And, oop, we have to add an agenda item.
I'll make a motion to add Wild and Seine to the agenda.
Okay, we'll add it to, we'll make that 6A. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. All right. Public comment, seeing none right now. We'll go on to correspondence. Our first is from, the correspondence from EverSource. They sent a letter with a, with a diagram and some information regarding regular tree maintenance. And this maintenance is due to challenges posed by drought, trees, disease, and lately more intense storms. The scheduled maintenance of the tree work did begin in January. The chart they sent us includes an overview of 2024 scheduled maintenance, the number of blocked roads that were caused by trees that fell down during the storms, the numbers, the number of customers who did refuse tree work. They do call homeowners and ask for permission on certain properties. I don't know if every single resident gets, gets phone calls or not. I know I did, but. And the impact of tree reliability on customers. So, in town, we have 41 miles of road and they did assess 35 roads. There were 30 blocked roads with trees that were cleared. The backbone, which is the connection of the wires, was about 13.4 miles and there were 53 customer refusals. This is posted on the town website, for anyone who wants to see it. Good? All right. Next is some information from the Connecticut Airport Authority. The Connecticut Airport Authority is hosting a public informational meeting to allow the public to provide preliminary comments and questions, Q and A, on the environmental assessment for the Bradley Airport proposed cargo development and perimeter road relocation project. This will be done near Runway 24 in Southfield. So, this presentation will be at the Connecticut Fire Academy tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And the public is welcome to go and ask questions and hear the presentation.
That whole piece is, it's all Southfield roads there.
It's, it is in Southfield. Mm-hmm. Yep. I understand it's all in Southfield?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 24th, January 29th, February 5th, February 12th, and February 14th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the 24th and 29th of January, the 5th, 12th, and 14th of February.
All right, all those in favor of approval of minutes?
Aye.
All right. Next is old business, back office shared services, which I'll table for tonight. I don't really have any information right now. That was number five. Number six, new business. We will have Mike Kramer from Wild and Seine Management make a little presentation.
Really appreciate it. I certainly appreciate getting reappointed as the town representative of the Oldham and Farmington and Wild and Seine, Salmon Brook, Wild and Seine organization. I'm going to pass out our, to our annual report from 2022. And we're on that again. February fiscal year, so it generally goes from October 4th to September 30th. And so this is a little bit old, but it takes us a while to get things done. I think it contains some good information and I normally wouldn't want to pass something out except I'm going to talk on this. Remind people what, why Wild and Seine organization is, where it extends from, and what it really does. And I'm a gentleman of history, because unless you're familiar with it, it just pop out of nowhere. It actually started in the study on President Bush back in 2006. And Congress initiated a study program, the CFP, which is designated. So in 2007, we put together this study. And we went to town, this brandy, appointed a couple representatives to go to that study. Ian Clark was one of them, I was the other. And so we worked with the other towns, there were 10 other towns and six other stakeholders at the time. We'd meet regularly every month and put together our assessment of what should be considered for Wild and Seine. We compared the study report and it was also at the same time, because we were going to try and go for designation and want to manage, you know, how are you going to manage to consider important. And when you're getting designated, they look for, they call outstanding resource down, what makes the river first worth considering for designation. And we had five of those, one was water quality, one was biological diversity, third one was recreation, geology, which sounds like kind of a funny fact, because what you're doing about geology. But geology had a real big impact on how the river formed and what's happened associated with the river. And the last, the fifth one was cultural landscape. And that includes things like indigenous people and what happened in the past, restored for the East Grandy or all longer. For instance, even in East Grandy, the first virulent settler here, where do you think they were? They were along the Farmington River, down there in the Caribou region. They were harvesting pitch pine at the time, that was pretty useful for strip building things. And so a guy came up out of Windsor, started harvesting stuff, and we brought his family up and they settled down. And that was the first, first thing that happened. The Farmington River was pretty important for things going on. So we recommended that it would go for approval, and that was in the 2011, 2012 timeframe. So it goes back to Congress to get approved, and it sat around, didn't get them taking the action on it. Finally, in 2019, the Congress acted on it, and former President Trump signed into law designation for Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook, Wild and Seine. So after that, okay, the study committee's all done, and then it became, we needed to form the management committee. And each town and other stakeholder, book the representatives. Ian Clark backed out of the town. I wanted to continue to do it, so the town appointed me as the town representative committee. And we needed an alternate. And some town, Paul Sapp, Paul here, because we all, all of them. And so you guys give us a timeframe for it, and I do renew our, our commitment to it, which we're both very happy with.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And, so what, what is the community and what do we do? We're certainly working on those five things that we consider crucial right now, like the backbone, the management reports, so we're trying to make, look at water quality, recreation, cultural landscape, and educate people, do things that can preserve, protect, and enhance the rivers and something like that. And that includes not just the rivers, but a formative impact on the surrounding landscape. So who's all involved? Who are the stakeholders? If you look, right inside the cover of the annual report, you'll see who the stakeholders are. There are nine towns. Basically, the Lower Farmington River stuff starts just above Camp. When we did the study committee, Camp was included as well. But when we got the designation, we took like a bottom mile of the Farmington River in Camp and moved it up to the upper Farmington River, well, in the designation. And it just made sense that why she can't be considered over them. There's an exclusion zone in Camp, so you just had everything from the next zone to the upper elevation that designated back in 2094. So it goes down from Camp Burlington to Ammon, Farmington, Seineberry, East Grandy, Wolffield and Windsor from the Farmington River. And then for the Salmon Brook, it's Grandy and Hartland. East Grandy has a distinction between only town, have both rivers, the Farmington and the Salmon Brook. It's really special. And then there are some other folks. The, you know, this whole thing goes through the National Park Service. We get money, when it comes, federal money comes from the National Park Service, two of us to use. And of course, we can't actually hold it, so we need a fiscal agent. Our fiscal agent is also one of the other representatives of the Farmington River Water Association. So they handle all our money. They've got the bank account for us. There are also two other water services, part of the members, Salmon Brook Water Association and the Flotter River Water Association. And the Southern National Park Service is a stakeholder, Connecticut DDP is a stakeholder. And then there's one final stakeholder, that's the Stanley Black and Black. The Black and Black are way better off than you. They're the owners of the Rainbow Dam. And there is an exclusion area associated with Rainbow Dam. It goes actually from up in East Grandy, so we've got part of an exclusion area in our town as well. And there was a lot of back and forth during the study committee, because of course, we want as much of the rivers we can get to designate. Then the Black and Black have, you know, what they hold out, what they wanted, because without that, we wouldn't get designation. So, and then that's going from where the Old Schoolville Dam is, down past Rainbow Dam itself, to some area of, well, that's an exclusion area that is not actually Wild and Seine designated. I'm very sickened about that, because I was always hoping I could stick a sign up on the 187th Bridge, which had just an incredible scenic view right there and say, you know, oh, this is Wild and Seine, but it's not. So, can't put that sign up. We continue, we get money, and this year, last year, we were getting $210,000 too. So we get together as a committee and decide, you know, what we want to spend that on. We can give it to nonprofits or individuals that have work that they want to do on the river. We do contract out some work, like water quality work, to FRWA, they require the work for it. And then we look for other people to help us too, if we want to study amphibians and reptiles, or birds, or invasive plants or something, we'll hire folks to do contracts. If it's a grant application to us, the grant, grant applicant needs to contribute some, like 25% in kind. We do a lot of different things. We can look through the annual report, see what we've done. I'll just call up, look at page nine, because Middle School, we've got the money for an overview to help with the Salmon and Trump Stocking Program and the Water River. I think that's expanding a little bit. I'm already going to be ready, it's adding, take the studies, back on the network, so maybe I'm going to want, and so I think they're going to become.
It's great.
That's kind of the background for the report. And then stuff that I passed up this past October, so they elected me to do the chairman.
That's what you get.
So, the town's got a little life support to it. If something you want to see, I do have a report.
Thank you, it's great.
And, and if you're trying to do some clearing for the ability to do more recreational fire things potentially?
Yes. I know through that, all of that has actually been leading it, we're running into all sorts of issues getting it done. But yes, she's approached the Illinois Department to appear, and we know what, and Brandy, see what it is, and what kind of plumbing it needs. And basically, we want, for Salmon Brook, about each one of the families down the confluence of the Farmington, in East Grandy. We want to make sure that we have a path, paddle canoes, or paddle boards, or fires down the river. Some of the bedfall on there is pretty big, so we need to get a sort of, a tree cutter, pick up one, and do the work. You've got to get, it turns out, which I didn't even realize this, the bed of the river was actually owned by a landlord. So you can pull down the water all you want, just as soon as you step out into the street, you're on their property. And if you want to do some work associated with the river, you need to get permissions from the landlord. So we'll have to go through the bedfall. I think the town of East Grandy was pretty good about it, and what I think we're going to have to acquire to get from Brandy, wanted some letters, so I actually had to draft a letter and go to, but they stayed with Wild and Seine, but they wanted, they wanted to be able to, and that's been quite a thing. Meantime, our tree cutter, which you've wanted, that would, on a timeline or something, flying across, so we may have to take a different tree. So, it's just a lot of things that we have to do, trying to make that happen. Another thing, we may have heard in the science of-
Recreation town, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it was very cool.
You have your hiking trails, you have your biking trails, and now it has like a kayak and river, you know?
And I think some work that was done at the Floydville Bridge, the idea was to ramp it up, so people could have more access to it. Paddle and, so that brings up one point I should make. When work is done on the river, it requires an army corps engineering. I think because it's designated Wild and Seine, that means that the National Park Service should have the opportunity to look at the work. And it's usually not to try and stop anything, it's just to have maybe comments to what might be included in terms of the White and Seine standpoint. And that process kind of got forgotten by the army corps, that should register that Floydville Bridge question.
Gotcha.
They just didn't do it. There's been discussions already between National Park Service and Army Corps of Engineers, they just ignore us. And I point that out, just so you know, in the future, if something happens-
Thank you.
-the National Park Service should follow.
Is that just because, is that just because it's wa, any kind of water, or because it's a-
Because it's designated.
Oh, Wild and Seine, I got you, okay.
That's one of the few things, for the most part, Wild and Seine is hands-off, that's a regulation.
Gotcha.
Town and state, so many things, and what is the same place. But if it gets to the point where there's something that has to be done, or maybe, really anything that has to do with the river bed, or its interior banks, because it's designated.
We had that muscle situation at Floydville. The muscles that were, so it got extra, it got extra attention.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we had to relocate muscles, so.
Any muscles were there?
Maybe someone that you have-
Yeah, some of the ones listed in the-
The wedge muscles?
Yeah.
I don't know what type it was.
Wedge muscles?
I don't know what kind it was.
Yeah, that was one other thing in the study committee, because along the stretches of the rivers, we had got a very good population, we covered all, there's a massive population for the, for 2011, I think, and if there is one that's, the warpaway muscle, that's really just pretty endangered, we hired somebody to go and look for it again, and they didn't find it, where it was found on the study committee. I'm not willing to say that it's gone, but it was, it was lost, and, lost and endangered. Another thing that's been going on lately, and I don't want to take too much more of your time, is that, you know, there's a rule of diligence that destroys the trees, we used to unlock, and we provided one last year, and we're providing one this year, with Connecticut The Dr. Chi, who released the Lady Beatles, that are a predator of the world, and that's happened. There was someone who released these grandy last year, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. I can get you some water if you want. I can if you need it.
Well, I think I'm-
Okay.
Sure, the end.
You must have gotten what I got, I started coughing too.
So, you know, we had done a little bit of survey a couple years ago, we wanted to do another survey of users, just to find out what people, you know, what they want us to do, to keep the public happy and certain, there's things that we're aware of, or we wanted to done, we've got some money if we could help.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great, it's great to know. These things are expensive, I'm looking at some of the costs for the analysis and-
Yeah.
-surveys and things.
See more money get spent in East Grandy. So, you know, we look at the school, one's only like $500.
Yeah.
I think we can maybe park and rec as far as getting access from like the bike trails to Grand Park, have people have better appreciation and time down on the banks. And I know that'll be a process for them, going through the, and all of that, so. Making partnerships there would be really good for the town.
Yes, there's something about, you know.
Yeah, I think that was a part of your last study, right, was about kind of getting people more with the water, you know, whether that was trails or water quality, and that.
Got some information, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming, appreciate it.
I listened to you.
Of course.
And I definitely thanks for reappointing. Because we're, we're a dedicated couple from East Grandy, there are other towns, we're short, we've got representatives, people, and we have to get them to do something to put time into it. It's tough, it's a volunteer organization.
Right.
Retention of volunteers is difficult nowadays, and almost in the aspect-
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Two of you look.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Enjoy the game. Enjoy the game.
Don't forget your jacket. It's almost warm enough, you don't need it, for now. Yeah, have a good night.
Good night.
All right, next on the agenda, which would be 6B, is the tax collector report. I just wanted to mention that we did renew our two-year contract with American National Recovery Group, they're a collection agency, which works with grant lists up until two grant lists ago, so they've, in the last 24 months, they've collected over $87,000 in past taxes through the 2020 grant list. So, our tax collector will be sending them the 2021 grant list in April, to start working on the 2021 and down. So it's, it's worth having. Yeah, so we just renewed that today. So as far as collections go, we're trending right on track. We're a little, just a little behind, last year at this time, we're just behind by 0.61%, but it's right on track, Sherry said, so. Which is great. We have, are you, do you have any questions about that? Or, whatever. Tax refunds are next. It's part of, is that on your agenda?
It's not on my agenda.
It's on the new agenda that I posted, though.
Okay.
It is on the new agenda. So, the agenda that's online, it has it on there. So, let's see. The first one, we have Ian Holdings LLC. This I had talked about a couple meetings ago. They haven't overs, we expect this every year, and it just, we put it in February's, or I think in January's finances, but we didn't actually get, we're not actually paying the refund until now, so it's $54,173.17. It's for leased cars. And, the next one is Stephen Fettis Living Trust, with Stephen Fettis, junior trustee of 351 Salmon Brook Street, for $707.86. Next is Financial Services Vehicle Trust of Britton Parkway, Hilliard, Ohio, $441.88. Next is Nissan Infinity Limited LLC, and a refund of $87.16. Next is Wells Fargo Real Estate Tax Services, a refund of $2,796.92. And finally, Kim Young of 16 Chelsea Lane, for $165.54. If I could have a motion to-
I'll make a motion to accept the tax refunds as presented.
All right, all those in favor of the tax refunds? All right. All right, okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next is 6C. This is for an appointment on Economic Development Commission. It's for an alternate to move to a full position, a full member position. Peter Ritter, I don't think his last name's on here, but it is for Peter Ritter. And that's the only appointment, if I could just have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the advancement of Peter Ritter from associate to full-time member of EDC.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of Peter going to full member, say aye. All right. 6D is the police fog, I'll just go through it, it's for January. There were 13 motor vehicle calls, 12 alarm calls, one disturbance, one domestic incident, one fire. These are all that the police went to. There could have been more fires, but that the police encoded. 26 medical assists, 11 suspicious incidents, eight traffic stops, 338 patrol checks, and 552 calls for service. Out of those traffic stops, there was seven warnings and one citation handed out. Great. Moving on to number seven on the agenda, public comment.
Good question. So when you have the various committee correspondents today with the Connecticut Airport Authority, it's not here for you guys, we're really quick here, but is, is that correspondence available publicly?
It should be on, I had sent it to the webmaster, it should be on the town website. I usually go back and check in to make sure it got posted, but I did send it, so it should be on there.
Did you read it today?
Yeah. You can have the wire if you want.
Thank you.
Yes, a proposal for a freight terminal in Southfield, and the movement of the perimeter road to facilitate that.
What's that?
They're going to be doing some construction on the Southfield side of the airport for, I believe, a freight terminal?
Freight and cargo.
Freight and cargo.
Yeah.
And they're going to readjust the path of the perimeter road, but all actions are going to be taken in Southfield, not East Grandy. That's, that's the Reader's Digest condensed version, I'm sure there's much more to it. I'm sure, and that's the Reader's Digest condensed version of it, it's a quick summary, I'm sure there's much more to it. That's for the, they're, put out a notice for public hearing pertaining to that.
Okay. Did you, did you know, was the town advised that they have been having things about-
This was the first I heard about it.
Yeah, this, this is something different. I actually saw something in the current about meetings regarding the flat town.
I haven't gotten any- I haven't gotten any information on that.
Um, I'll, I'll get what I can and forward it to you because I was, I was interested that I hadn't heard anything. I wondered if this had to do.
Yeah, nope, it's different.
This is something different, so.
I can ask, I have a Bradley Development League meeting on Friday and it's with the four town, four Bradley towns. And usually there's a rep from um, C A A there, so I can ask them if they have information. Give me. Okay, you're welcome. All right, next on the agenda is to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at seven oh three P M.